Review the agenda. Any changes? Maybe potentially have an FFA presentation if the students are here, but we'll have a discussion to do any actions. Underboard items, yeah, number six. And then just change football sharing to public item letter B. And then the Bearcat Council will be letter A. Just change the order and have the elementary students talk first. Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it as amended.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Review and approve the minutes from two thousand nineteen September. Any questions or changes that anybody noticed? If not, are you in the motion to approve the minutes? Make a motion to approve the minutes? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports?
While you guys are looking through the bills, um, general fund cash balance to end of September of one point one six million. Capitals, one hundred and two thousand one sixty-eight. One cent sales tax, one fifty-six, one sixty-four. Debt service, thirteen thousand four seventy. Management, seventy thousand four forty. Nutrition, seventy-six thousand two forty-seven. Activities, eighty-seven. Poetry team and trust agencies, one thirty-nine ninety-eight.
Anything else you want to raise?
No, I don't know if you guys saw the financial health report I sent out a couple of weeks ago or not, but we finished where we kind of thought we would right after we hired the extra teacher last year. Down two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we're back where we thought we were, so we're not, you know, sitting too bad. Um, I will say, and I'll talk about it a little bit later in my report, but we are down in the... Certified won't be as far down as what we are down bucks and seats because of the formula.
Any questions on any of the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports.
Second? Oh, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna do five. The first Bearcat Council Elementary Service Presentation.
I'm Mr. H. Well, wait there.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. This is my September Bearcat Council. Our September Bearcat Council. Ann, Laura and I had an idea to kind of provide, um, an opportunity for our sixth grade students to be leaders inside the building and outside the building. So they're gonna talk about their leadership opportunity. And I'll have October present their idea to you. Go ahead kiddos.
Hi, I'm Taylor.
I'm Weston.
I'm Haley.
Haley.
Amelia.
Hannah.
The first thing we did was like a plan to know what we were doing. We decided that we were going to paint paw prints in Green and Allison on Main Street. It was all free old donations so the business owners could give them out they wanted. Another thing we did was we forgot to play.
This is our pledge. On my honor, I pledge to do my best to show citizenship, keep my grades up, participate in all projects, and follow the Bearcat way inside and outside these walls. Bearcat pride.
How much money we raised?
In total, we raised around nine hundred dollars. We are planning to put the money towards building benches for the community and school districts for the community.
Our overall experience, we got to help the community and we learned how to socialize. We also learned how to use T-Mark all spray painting. The rest of us, the rest of the council that couldn't be here tonight, Samuel Martinez, Samuel, Camille, Samuel, Kevin.
How did you guys come up with your pledge?
Uh, we all, well, some of us, whoever really wanted to make ideas, um...
Do you guys possibly make the community a little bit?
Ones who wanted to make an idea of what it could be, made some, and then we all put all of our brains together and that's how we came up with our pledge.
Would you have fun doing all this?
Yeah.
Did you guys learn a lot?
Yes.
Do you think that people are looking up to you when you guys are on this council?
Yeah.
What was the hardest thing about going around in the community?
I wouldn't ask in the youth.
Being ill and give you a hard time.
It's a hard work to dream.
They're grabbing the ball, Mike. I got forty-seven of them.
I think that's an important part for someone to, to adjust and, and adapt to a no. And these kids know that they need to learn how to adapt to an no. It's not always gonna be a yes. So you have to learn to recover from that.
I will say that during, uh, while they were up in green, talking to people up there, I went down and talked to Mrs. Tracy. And before they got back here, she had a phone call from one of the business people up in green saying how good of a job these kids did.
Were you surprised at the amount of money you raised?
Yeah.
I think that's very impressive. Good job. Anything else you guys have to add?
Not really.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You both did good work.
We're presenting to you an idea that maybe we could, as the October student council, um, maybe clean out the old workshop beside the art room. And maybe utilizing that workspace as maybe a workshop for us to, we were thinking of cleaning that out and using that extra stuff in there for maybe scrap metal and stuff. So, um, we could use those profits and maybe spread them fifty-fifty and maybe having a garage sale to clean some of that stuff out. And using the profits to maybe build some benches for parents if they're waiting for their kids. They could sit there or we could have class outside.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Alexis. I'm Latenzin.
Very good.
Todd.
Carol.
Good.
I'm gonna be your, your committee doing all the work?
Yeah. I'm gonna be doing all the work.
And when do you plan to have that? Do you have a date for it?
Yeah, November second.
That, that gives us, if the board approves that later during, um, actual items, then that gives us two weeks to advertise it.
So you do like a scrap guide type of thing?
Well, they'll, they'll have like a yard sale with some of the stuff and the rest will just then go to the scrapyard.
And what kind of the day would you use for, for this work? When would you be doing your work out there? During school or after school?
After.
After lunch?
Study hall.
How do you plan to advertise it?
We might like put flyers around town.
Yeah.
We already have the list of, um, a guesstimate of what's in there.
Do you guys each have your favorite areas that you would prefer to work on during this project? Be the marketing, wanting to be the marketer or the cleaner or...
Scraper.
Okay. Any other things that you guys had to add?
I think their main concern, what they forgot to ask is we're looking for a space that's useful during the winter months that's already heated. It's not being utilized now. So if we can create that space and continue the good work that this council is doing, it would be much, very much appreciated.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yeah, good idea. If anybody didn't sign up or missed the message, if you wanted to speak during the next part, please add them into this list. We'll give everybody three minutes to, um, discuss. So next item is the football sharing, um, which I'm sure everybody knows that we're currently in a twenty-eight E agreement with Clarksville that we share, uh, our football program. And that twenty-eight E agreement expires this year, so we have an opportunity to continue the agreement or, um, go back and have our own separate programs. So that's kind of why we're talking about this now. The state, we have to turn that in next month, um, to the state and let them know what we would like to do as a school district. So we appreciate the feedback that you are all here to provide, and we'll start with, um, Fon Wibkey.
Well, thank you for having this public discussion and giving us a chance to talk about some things. I kind of have some notes, so I'm just going to read my notes and try to stay on task. So the first thing I'd like to ask is that you listen to our coaches, the athletic directors and staff. I know that they had a meeting and discussed the, the strengths and the weaknesses that had went along with this program. Overall, I know the kids have been great that have come over, but there have been some difficulties working with the school district. Um, just logistics of handing out materials and staffing issues for games when they've been played at a location other than North Butler. One of my original big concerns is that our kids just can't continue to play at one A district. They need to be backed down to where they're playing school sizes that match their own and have the same struggles we do with having players. When we go up against a team like Nashville Plainfield, we're very evenly matched. They're in the same boat we are. They have a limited number of kids to play. When we go up against a team like Appleton, Parkersburg, or Dyke and Hartford, they have fifty, sixty, seventy kids there, and they're just rotating them in and out. I think by the end of our, a couple of those games, they were playing their JV teams against us just to give their JV more practice. So I just don't think we can continue to do that anymore. I also want you to think about the four thousand dollar facility that our community built. We built that with the understanding that our North Butler players would be playing there. The community gave that money. And I have a real problem with having my kid play at another facility that I think is subpar when we have the facility here that we should be using. And I realize Clarksville has just recently put money into their facility as well, but they also clearly labeled it a Clarksville football field. So that has me concerned about how dedicated they are to this program when they are already relabeling their stuff as Clarksville. So I don't think they're as dedicated to that, and same with the junior high program. Last year we had a lack of jerseys, and this year it appears they had all brand new Clarksville jerseys for our kids to wear in the junior high program. I'm not sure of that, but that's what it appeared to be. I also wanted to talk, you know, it wasn't that long ago that when we had our middle school here, that we asked that all of our teams be played at Green so that all of the teams could practice together, all of the coaches could work together, and we've wanted that to build our program. Now we're splitting our teams apart again. We're doing all this traveling to and from, and it just seems like it's a waste of time for our kids. They're practicing later. They're not getting things done on time, so I would like that to be considered. And then mostly I just always want North Butler to be put first. We sometimes act like we don't have any cards, and I think we're holding a lot of cards as North Butler. We have the number of players. We have football coaches. We have an excellent facility. They just don't want us to give in to Clarksville's needs when we should be put first. I'm all about being a good neighbor and helping them out because the players that they have sent over are great kids. Most of their families have been very supportive of this, but they're not sending the numbers over. A lot of their kids just won't come play for us because we are North Butler. And almost all their senior class boys, only one came over, and a lot of those boys used to play football. But either them or their parents won't let them come and play here. So I have a problem when we're asking our kids to do that and they won't do this as well. So I just want North Butler to be first. I don't want any hidden politics in it. I just want you to think about us and us first only.
Thank you. Um, next is gonna be Michael Ball.
Well, almost everybody here knows who I am, and I have no irons in this fire whatsoever. Three-year-old granddaughter, that's as close as I get. But I've been doing youth sports in this town for twenty years, and this is not working, period. This is detrimental to our football program so bad, it's not even funny. Our junior high is getting walked all over. Terrible practice times, lack of contact drills, lack of physical condition. I try to take a night off from YSF to go to a junior high game every year to watch my past players. And I'll tell ya, our kids in fifth and sixth grade are ten times more conditioned than our seventh and eighth grade are. Hands on our knees at halftime, breathing heavy, and it's a beautiful night out for football. You ask them, why are you, why are you in such bad shape? Well, we don't have time to do any conditioning. We have to go straight into our practices. Well, I have a problem with that because you're asking kids to put themselves out there in harm's way if you're not physically and mentally prepared to play. It doesn't matter whether you're a seventh grader or a senior. If you're not ready physically and mentally, you're gonna get hurt. Somebody's gonna get hurt. I'm surprised it doesn't happen more. But this numbers thing, when this first started was we can't play sophomores and freshmen against juniors and seniors. Bullcrap. You play the best eleven players you got, doesn't matter what grade they are or what they do. Been that way for twenty years or longer. But I've been in this town for thirty, and we've never had a problem like this. We've had down years, don't get me wrong. And so has Clarksville. We've had down years. And I know a lot of people over there, but it's not our responsibility here to make sure that they have theirs, theirs taken care of. We have to worry about our kids. I worry about my family first, then other people's kids. And pretty much what I do in this town is worry about kids. But I think as a whole, we need to worry about our kids first and their kids second. And their school board should be thinking the same exact thing. Worry about them first and us second. And this, this little agreement here, it's, it's not working. It's, the numbers things don't add up. Fon pointed out that the two team, well, she said the one team, Nashville Plainfield, we would have probably been in that district. If we were in that district, we'd probably be in second or third place. I'm not saying, I know that for a fact. I'm just guessing, knowing by going by stats, what we have for numbers, we would probably be a second or third place team in that district. The RPIs come out for the football this week. North Butler is fifty-first out of fifty-four schools in class one A. We would probably be in the twenties or the teens if we were in class A. They take the top sixteen teams for the playoffs. Catch each, each district winners in no matter what their RPI is. And they take the next top after that. We would have a really good chance if you finished in second place in that district. Going by who, who we would play, and I don't know who we would play for non-conference schedule or non-district schedule, but if we played somebody tough and beat them, that would boost our RPI. And you're looking at maybe losing three games and still making the playoffs going by the RPIs. And that's, I mean, I'm all about the competitiveness. I'm not into a financial thing or any of that other stuff. But just going by that, we need to just go back to ourselves. Our numbers are good. We have, how many sixth graders going? Thirteen or fourteen sixth graders will be moving up into seventh grade. We have at least that many fifth graders that'll be coming up. Our seventh graders, our eighth graders, they're all right here in the teams. If you have teams in every sport moving up, you're gonna have numbers. You're gonna lose a few. If you figure if there's fifteen kids out for football as a seventh grader, you're gonna have nine or ten by the time they're seniors. Cause you're gonna lose five along the way. That's the sweetest. They're not gonna wanna play anymore. They get a job, whatever. They get hurt. They don't feel like playing anymore. But if you can have in double digits in numbers all the way up with your grades that are participating, then it's not a numbers thing anymore. So, I mean, we started this out with not wanting to play freshmen and sophomores. The last name I went to, it was freshman and sophomores. We had two freshmen out there on the field playing against AP. We had six or seven sophomores. And that includes some of the younger classmen from Clarksville too, but... So we can't go back to that. Well, we wanted to do this because we don't wanna play younger kids. No, we're playing younger kids anyway. Cause the upperclassmen, and that's a trend. That's a trend that we need to break here is when you, I think the kids get tired of losing and working hard, and then as they get up into the upper grades of high school, it's easier just to say, I'm done. Because kids are soft. They are. I'm sorry, but kids are soft in it. They don't really have the workup that it takes to get there. But hopefully, like I said, for the last three or four years, we've had double-digit kids come up through it. So I think we can keep them because kids coming up, like the kids going from this year in sixth grade to seventh grade next year, there are some really good, good, sound kids in there, both football and academic like this. We ask them all the time about their grades. They're getting good grades. So I think we're going in the right direction. We just need to keep going that way.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Tim Primus.
Yeah, right here. I'm not gonna speak. I have a few questions. I guess, I, you need to educate me first. Why did we initially decide on this, uh, twenty-eight E or whatever you called it agreement a few years ago? I mean, what, what, what did we think the advantage would be?
A bigger team was the big advantage. At that time, we were losing a lot of kids to the, I don't know, maybe too many reasons, but we didn't have a very large team, so by combining the program with Clarksville, we'd have an opportunity for Clarksville to continue to have a program and to grow. Our program was the hope.
So Clarksville was in trouble, or did we approach Clarksville or did Clarksville approach us?
I believe Clarksville...
It was kind of joy.
I don't know.
So you both got together and you said this would be a good idea?
There was some conversation back and forth, and we sat down and discussed it.
So you thought there would be some advantages, I assume?
Yes.
Are there financial advantages to this? Not really.
No, no.
There certainly isn't a competitive advantage. You understand that, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Um, the next thing, I have an election coming up here in less than a month. Where do you guys stand currently? I wanna know each board member where you kind of stand with the sharing thing.
We will.
So you don't wanna share that with us tonight?
No, we will be. We will be soon.
Why can't we here? I understand.
They're gonna vote tonight.
I understand they're gonna vote tonight. I'd like to hear where you guys stand on the issue. I have an election coming up. I have to vote for you people again. I wanna know where you stand right now. You certainly have something in your head where you think, where you have an idea which way you're leaning, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And I was gonna say, just to be like, um, we need to keep like a neutral mindset until we gather all the information and we still have another person to talk, but I'd be happy...
So in fifteen minutes, you're gonna gather all the information you need?
Yes. I mean, I could say, well, we've been, I can say for myself personally, I've been talking to, I talked to the athletic director, I talked to the principal, I've talked to some students.
You mean over there?
No, here.
Okay.
At North Butler.
Okay, and what do they say?
They're saying what I'm hearing here is that most...
They don't want it?
Most parents wanna drop down to class A. That's why they want, don't wanna share. It's not that, it's nothing against like Clarksville. It's nothing against the kids. The kids are great. The kids that I've talked to wanna keep it going. They like sharing with other, they like their teammates.
Right.
Which makes sense. I mean, why, why wouldn't they?
I've been married for eleven years. I love my wife. We get along. We don't even share a bathroom.
Right.
I mean, that's not a reason to stay together because they like one another. They get along.
Right.
You have to stay together because there's an advantage. There's a financial advantage. There's a competitive advantage. There isn't that. It's clear. I mean, I don't see how you can still be up in the air with, when you're gonna vote in eight minutes. Now, if you make the horrible decision, the terrible decision of staying and of sharing, what, define sharing for me. What, what does that look like? Are we gonna be, be playing football games over there? Someone needs to define sharing. I knew what it was when I was a kid when I had my talkatoy, but what's it mean to you?
Usually, if you're talking equality, it would be a fifty-fifty arrangement, but I mean, our sharing agreement now, that's not, all the terms are not necessarily worked out by the board, but what the board understanding was that the varsity games would be played in North Butler. Clarksville would have some games which turned into the junior high, so the junior high plays in Clarksville, and the practices are in Clarksville more so to give space for practicing. That's kind of what the sharing has looked like up until this point. We haven't discussed like if, this is the first step, if we share or don't share, and the logistics of how the sharing would...
That's nuts. That's nuts. You're gonna make a decision to share and you don't have the logistics worked out? That's crazy.
Well, it's already happening. I mean, I think it would continue the way it is if it were to continue, so...
Yeah, it would, and I think, I think each one of us has talked to various people around the community. And I, I thought it was interesting that most of the kids were saying they liked the Clarksville kids. They, they would like to continue to play with them, but they don't wanna play a level up. I mean, so they were basically saying, I guess, some of them were saying no, some of them were saying yes. But the majority of what I've heard is similar to what I've heard the other night. So of course, we're gonna take that into consideration because we work for the, the people of North Butler.
Exactly.
And that's, that's what, what we're here doing. So I think we've all, you know, one of the reasons we opened this up tonight is we, we wanna hear from people. We know people are very interested, and we are very much...
These are the people that care.
Yeah, right.
In here tonight. They're the ones that got in their car and came over here and care.
I just don't want...
It's pretty clear where everybody stands in this room, I would say.
I just don't want you to think, oh, we haven't thought about it, cause trust me, we've all thought about it, and we've, we've all been talking to people in the community.
I, I'd like to address a couple of issues, Tim. Uh, first off, you said we've got an election coming up. Yes, we do. We don't have the, my personal opinion is we don't have the time and/or the facts to make a decision tonight. I think we should table this until after the election, get the boards together, have a good discussion about it with the boards, bring something back and propose it to the communities. We've got till the twenty-fourth or fifth of November to make a decision.
Right, I would certainly love to know the logistics of it. I mean, that's crazy.
Right. The other side of it is, I agree with you. We're North Butler. We built this thing with the understanding that we're gonna hopefully get Clarksville into the mix here at some point under the North Butler name and Bearcats and that stuff. We need to keep on that track and get that done. You know, we, we've put a lot of time and effort as communities into this thing and given up a lot of stuff ourselves as communities that, you know, yeah, I, I agree with you. We need to support this thing and do what's right for North Butler. You know, and there's three communities involved in this. I'd love to have four, but you know, that remains to be seen, but yeah, we need to work towards keeping the North Butler thing going because that's why we, you know, did that originally. We made it North Butler, not Green Allison Store or whatever, a stack of letters, because we wanted to bring Clarksville into this thing too because we're gonna be stronger together. You know, it's gonna be some growing pains to get there, and you know, we're not gonna get everything right the first time. We try it. But we've got the opportunity. We've got some history now. We know, you know, a little bit of what we've been dealing with. We can grow off of that and build off of that. But I think the boards, you know, after this election, get those boards together and, you know, address it at that point. But that's gonna have to be a number one priority of the new boards, you know, to see after the election, you know, we've got those people on there for a couple of years, you know, and let them live with the, you know, decisions they make then, and, you know, but let's, yeah, give them some guidance and get that thing right. but let's, yeah, give them some guidance and get that thing right. So, that's just my opinion, so.
That's all we got.
Thank you, thanks for your questions. Next, we have Renee Zoggy.
Um, I will just reiterate a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I would be another person that would rather see us go from One A down to A. Um, and Eric, you just kinda brought up my, my main second point and really my main point is I would like to see you table this so that Coach Vanderloop and the rest of the staff can finish this season without some decision hanging over them that could affect how his practices run, how the boys treat each other. Um, because again, we're trying to raise young men here, not just football players. So, I would like to see you table this decision.
The other thing I'd like to add is, um, I know we're fighting declining numbers, I don't know where Clarksville's at, but you know, five, six, eight, ten years down the road, you know, what do those class sizes look like? You know, if we're together, are we gonna have these society teams at that point? Or, you know, if we don't do something now, are we just shooting ourselves in the foot for later on down the road? You know, and I, I haven't looked at those numbers, I don't know any of that stuff, but that's something else we need to be looking at too is, you know, where's our class sizes down in the lower elementary grades that are coming up into the programs? You know, are we gonna have enough students, you know, on our own to keep that going if we don't, you know, include Clarksville in this?
I do appreciate everybody's point about going down to Class A because, I mean, you have to think about, we think about the students first, or I do. And as far as safety too, like being against a team that is, is our level, have the same amount of kids can better suit us. So, one, it's nice to win games because then it pumps the kids up. Cause I know they're trying hard, I've watched a lot of football games this year and they, they have good spirit and they're working hard out there. And it does bring them down to get beat all the time. But, I mean, more so looking at this, the competitiveness that we're matched well so we don't run into a bunch of our team kids getting hurt, which we don't wanna see.
Any other comments, questions?
Anybody else on your list?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks everyone for sharing. Okay, next we have board items of discussion, we have the legislative priorities.
Um, I sent out a week or so ago legislative priorities. It looks like on the third. If, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go through those yet or if you have, if you can just email them to me, I'll get them posted tomorrow to the ISB site. They, they gave us like this time, we started doing it the other way. Last time, we just emailed it to them. I'll just tape them and compile them from everybody and get the top four to come out.
Okay. NHS position?
We've had a request with the NHS position become a paid position on the, uh, on the salary schedule. With the two, then we have to open, we have to open up negotiations and then we put the association, cause it's part of the master contract right now. So, Mrs. Waller, uh, has asked if we would do that and consider that. So, that could be a paid position instead of a volunteer position, cause there's a lot of work.
That'd be like a pay, like a coaching position?
It'd be like a coaching position. Kinda like, uh, what's the other one?
Student council, two percent. And we have historically had the guidance counselor do that job. What is the reason for moving out of that position?
I don't know, but it's, I think it was part of her position just because she enjoyed doing it. I think she volunteered. I don't necessarily think it's part of the counselor role.
It's not in any other schools.
I just think like when I was in high school, it was the guidance counselor's role than to, I don't know, maybe it has changed.
I'm not sure. Any place, I would place I've been, it has, it's always been a paid position.
The proposal for the position would be how much?
It'd be two percent. So, but we'd have to sit down with the association and negotiate that to get that in on the contract.
So, we're talking about six hundred and fifty dollars at the bottom of the pay sale or the zero step or about eleven hundred at the max?
So, it, it's not necessarily in action because we would have to set up, if the board chooses to go forward, I could set up a meeting between the negotiation teams.
Is that something we would start this year yet or wait till next year?
Either is fine, I just think they do a comparable amount of work to what a student council supervisor does. It'd be nice to compensate them.
If not, a little bit more.
So, my understanding, the next step is that administration would get together with.
The negotiating, no, negotiation teams.
Okay, yeah, okay, so the members of those teams.
We have, uh, if anybody here wants to.
Drop an enrollment, do we think that we have the money to add this position as paid versus putting it somewhere else?
It's only, and it's not even a thousand dollars.
So, right now, we're gonna decide if we're gonna look forward with negotiations or?
Well, we need to have a consensus on it whether or not to accept the meeting, so.
We have to negotiate on adding this position?
Or we can wait till negotiations and then we're gonna wait hopefully it's our agenda.
We could wait till after the budget meeting just to see where the actual enrollment is or where all the dollars come out and see where we work our priorities and cost funding?
That would probably help us out, be more comfortable with the decisions. We'll be looking at everything in October and then we know.
All the positions that we have, yeah. Are you okay with waiting?
Yeah, either way.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just table that. Uh, the Spanish.
Nah, there's nothing there. Um, we offered the possession, it turned down twice, so we're hoping one of you can take it so we have something to talk about, right?
Can I ask how that's going with online classes, the students going good and learning?
Yeah, there's a summary in the, um, admin report with how it's going.
That's going good?
Yeah. I mean, I can't say that they love it. It's hard and they have to be motivated to get online and, and do it. But, um, Mishmet has been working with students in study hall and, uh, keeping track of how they're doing, doing check-ins with them all the time and helping them and help.
All right.
So, probably we need to see if there are any, um.
We're getting help.
Yeah, any winter grads.
Well, one of, one of these was.
Oh, was it? No, okay, okay.
And I have reached out to some universities too, they just.
Did they get another job at a different school?
Most of the ones that we've, um, talked to have declined it because of their living situation. They wanna be in a bigger city.
Uh, number seven is the action on the football sharing.
I make a motion to table that until after the election and, you know, might have to have a special meeting till after.
Might have to be, our, our next board meeting is that for, it'll be a reorganization meeting on the second Monday in November.
No, it won't be. So, we, I went to a meeting at the county and they have to have these two full weeks to do, to do the canvas. So, the final thing will be to us till like tomorrow, end of this week. So, we won't be able to have a meeting until after probably the twentieth.
And we have two more football games left, is that right? Or, and then, and then playoffs? Well, we need to have it.
The state gives us extensions for everything else, although they're gonna suspend that twenty-eight E agreement.
I don't know if they will or not because they have to redistrict. Well, that's why they moved nobody to twenty-four. We gotta sit down and start to look at numbers with the certified meetings.
Well, the, you know, we can talk.
I mean, I think the.
Twenty-four, right?
What's this?
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
So, you can, well, it's reading next week.
November twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Which we'll have to have a meeting the receipt from the board anyway.
So, you're talking about having a meeting on November twenty-fifth to talk about football and then send it in on the twenty-sixth? But, I mean, you'd have to go to Clarksville too, wouldn't it, even?
Well, we'd have a joint board meeting, have to have a joint board meeting and have some discussion about it.
And then it would be approved.
And then we, at that meeting, we're gonna yay or nay it and send it to the state accordingly.
Sixteen eleven power.
Yeah, seems a little bit late.
I would say, why don't we just, if we wanna do it just to keep the team solidified like right now where North Butler, Clarksville, wait till after the last game and then do it the next week? Because it does, I mean, to me, I have no problem with the election. I mean, you're talking about so the next board coming on can have a say on it, whoever that may be.
But, they won't have that to benefit of all of these discussions either. We've even done some of the due diligence that we've done. So, I guess my thought would be to get together after the football season ends so that we don't cause any issues with kids.
Then they won't be able to be technically rated in the conference or I think we don't get that in enough time.
I think waiting that way is.
So, what about having a meeting the last week in October? Does that work? Or we could even, we're gonna have a budget meeting on the twenty-third if we push it back a week and have that as part of that?
I'd say combine the meetings if we could. Only thing, we'd wanna have a joint meeting with Clarksville. You know, so after your budget or the budget meeting ahead or behind the.
Well, just do two separate ones then. So, I would say.
I know it's online, but why would we have to have a budget or a meeting with Clarksville when it's part of the decision? That's just, I'm just, I'm sitting here trying to wrap my head around that.
Ultimately, there, you know, one way or the other, we need input from them too, Mike. You know, why not try to get together and have input from both parties involved versus, you know, just us, you know, at this point saying, "No, you guys, we're, we're done with you." I guess I don't like that idea either, you know, we didn't share unless, you know, at least have a discussion.
I'm personally okay with, I like the idea of at least minimally just waiting on the vote to keep the team at North Butler, Clarksville till the season's over. And then how we, if we structure the meeting as we just have a meeting ourselves or together, I'm okay either way.
So, do we know if Clarksville wants to share with us? We don't know.
We don't know that because it'll go to their board after us.
Not if it's a joint meeting?
Not if it's a joint meeting, but if it was a separate meeting like it is, it'd have to go to their board for approval also.
I like the idea of a joint meeting just because we are trying to, um, make sure that we keep a relationship going there with the classroom board. Um, and so, to share some other things. Um, and, you know, we do have a longer-term goal of, um, trying to, you know, share as much as possible, as much as makes sense. So, I like the idea of having a joint meeting so that all of us can talk. Um, and then I think we'll, we'll make the best decisions.
So, we've gathered all this information and talked to both communities and we don't even know where Clarksville stands? That's what I'm hearing?
Right.
Not for, I mean, not until it goes in front of the board. You can't make decisions like I can know where I wanna.
But I heard everybody here, they talked to communities, everybody talked and.
To our community. Cause like you said, we, we, I value what our community says first.
So, do I get to come back to this meeting and find out how all you voted?
Yes, absolutely. Everybody's invited.
Yay.
So, motion to table the meeting, try to get a joint meeting together with Clarksville on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth or sixth, whatever it was?
Sometime after that, so it would be the last week in October if possible.
Okay.
So, we'll have to talk to them and find out if that works with them.
So, I guess we won't set a date right now pending, or we could set a date pending that the members, the majority of the members can make it here. Can we get that, yeah? So, let's, what week, what day of the week? Mr. Foster? Okay, so let's tentatively plan Monday, the twenty-eighth of October here, a joint board meeting for the football sharing agreement.
I hate to interrupt, but I, just so you know, that's conferences.
Oh, yeah, conferences and home volleyball.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good call, thank you.
Conferences are the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
What about?
Well, they wouldn't have to. What's a parent teacher conference?
All my.
They'd go till like seven o'clock at night.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
So, we'd go after conferences on the twenty-ninth. Well, twenty-eighth, we got home volleyball too. We got, we're hosting district volleyball.
So, what if we try for October twenty-ninth at seven thirty?
We can start before conferences.
On the twenty-ninth at seven a, or seven PM?
All right.
Oh, I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Okay.
Um, number eight, approved Bearcat Council Elementary Service proposal. I need a motion to approve, um, cleaning out the shed, having garage sale, scrap metal.
We had to should that, they were gonna split proceeds with us as a district? Okay.
Fifty-fifty. Probably for, I mean, maybe heating costs for the building and other.
Well, it's just, any, any time that I've been associated with the student project like that, that's kinda the way it's done, is just gonna proceed to school. There's, there's a couple of things out there that I probably won't pick out.
What is being, I mean, what, what's, I mean, what are they?
It's just sitting out there right now.
That's just, it's been sitting there for three years.
Okay.
Some old TVs, almost of them got taken already.
All right, and a motion to approve the project.
I'm actually approve, is that compulsory?
Second?
I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Approved survey land cost transaction.
Um, when we approved the sale of the land at the south end of the football field to Tim Shaggy, um, we talked about, uh, originally, I talked about him paying for the survey cost. His lawyer had told him that the district should take care of that. So, he's asked if we would cover the thirteen hundred eighty-two dollars. I would recommend him to recover that cost.
That was part of his, is that what he was gonna take it out or?
Um, we, that's the way we talked about it originally.
And why? And I just, I don't understand.
His, his lawyer said that's the way it usually works is the, the seller pays for the survey.
But, we agreed to allow him to buy it if he paid for the survey. I'm not for that. I think he has to pay for it, because that's what we.
That's the way it was presented to us.
Yeah.
His lawyer can recommend whatever, but we gotta agree to it.
Right, and I think we gave a pretty fair deal anyways to begin with, so that was kind of part of it. So we'll just.
Do you have that motion on that?
Okay.
Next, review the nutrition policy.
I was asked to put this out there.
Yes. So the biggest question I had for the board would be is, one thing, should we remove the portion about the alternative lunch if they have a negative balance? Because it looks like the law was changed last year, that we really shouldn't be providing an alternative lunch even if kids have a negative balance, they should all get the same lunch. Which, if we change that, we do need to change the, it's in, I have it here, it's in the handbook, high school and student handbook as well as our policy too. Which we probably want to reset, but on the website at least, update that if we decide we wanna do that. It sounded like at the high school, um, they weren't giving that alternative lunch anyways.
Neither school does.
The elementary.
Neither.
Neither one does. Okay. So we should probably just take it out of the policy, because we're not even following it anyways. So. Okay, so we'll update the policies to basically remove that there won't be any alternative lunch, um, offered if everybody's comfortable with that, which I think is the law. So we'll update those things. And then the second thing would be is discussing, like, do we wanna change anything in the policy about how we're addressing when lunch balances are low or negative? Do we wanna change the wording, um, as to, do we want students to be notified? Would we want, um, no notification of the student and just leave it up to the parents?
I don't understand why kids are pulled out of low balance. It's not like it's their money and they pay it. Parents can go on the website and put in a balance. Like, I put it for twenty dollars, so every time my kid's balance got to twenty dollars, I was getting an email every day until I added more money. I don't think we need to embarrass kids in the lunch line and tell them that they need lunch money.
So that, one of my questions was, when do parents get notified? So you said they get notified when the balance is.
You can go in there and set the amount that you want and you're gonna play daily until you put money in the account. So really, I don't see a reason to involve the students.
Is that something we should set the same for everybody then? That amount, amount?
Ten dollars.
Well, but parents even get a set of.
It's, it's our, any set of ten dollars automatically, you can adjust it.
Yeah, even if they're, they don't go in and set it. It's already.
Okay.
Who's gonna be responsible for collecting this money for people that, you know, have the family? It's something to take into consideration. You're just gonna let them get to five hundred dollar balances? What you can, what are we gonna do? No, because, I mean, they give a thing that they're a negative.
It doesn't mean that they. That doesn't mean that they're gonna take care of it though.
But we still hold the parents responsible, send them to a collection agency, but I don't think, but I don't think the kids should be embarrassed at school about it. And then we do the. I just need to know what we're gonna do, so I. Well, in October, we, or last November or December, we had people donate money if they wanted to, so I think, you know, if there's money to cover at the end, if there's balances, I think the school's fine enough, we know which people, students, their families are abusing it and which ones really need that should help. I don't know that, and I'm the person that puts the money in that account and it's supposed to be random, like, I'm not supposed to be able to pick and choose. Yeah, and that's fine, I'm just saying if every year it's the same family, then maybe, you know, we did, we need to make sure they're on the free program, but, you know, I, I just don't see why to get them involved at all. Yeah, I agree with that, but I just didn't know how far we're gonna let these parents go negative before we, something's gonna be done. And we need to make sure though, because like I'm, okay, so you get an email every day that you need money in the account, but you have to make a phone call and say, you know, my kid's lunch is gone. You know, we'll send you to collect something like that, but, I mean, if the parents are ready to pay, but if it's gonna be.
Even if they're negative so far, we're not telling them they can't eat, right?
We have to let, I mean.
Well, there's one thing, so I mean.
They all get their first lunch, no matter how far they're in the hole. Every single person. When they come back for seconds for extra stuff is when, if they're in the negative, then, and that is the way that the state and the federal government expect for that to be run, because you have to have some control.
So the kids need to know if they're negatives, so they know whether they're gonna get seconds or not.
I mean, can they see that?
You know, it's not like you screen them and say, you're not eating. We just say, sorry, you need money.
If they logged into their.
And they go.
Yeah, so I mean, at some point, they, if they're in high school and they, they're gonna turn on, I don't know.
You know, some schools just get into real trouble and have for a ten thousand dollars a debt because of things like that.
Forty thousand?
Yeah, and we just don't need to be in that situation.
It doesn't say anything about this part of the policy, just says, policy and supporting information regarding mail, mail charges shall be provided right into all households at or before the start of the year. Students and families who transfer, all staff responsible for enforcing any aspect of the policy. Records of how and what the policy and supporting information is communicated to households should be retained. Could we notify students via email instead of telling them personally?
We could, if they read their email.
Well, that's on, I mean, that's on them, but I'm just saying that, that.
But the problem is, is if they don't read their email and they still come up to get seconds, then we still have the issue.
Then we're gonna turn them away from the seconds line, and that's gonna be embarrassing.
Or they come through for seconds and put their number in, and if they're in the negative.
And I don't care, I would prefer not to tell the students that either, but then you need to solve the problem with the seconds. So fixing one problem creates another one.
When the students put their lunch number and they see their balance?
No.
No.
The person at the point of sale sees their balance. It comes up on the computer with their picture and it tells what their balance is.
Thing to solve one way or another, because you're gonna have a kid that.
Well, and it does happen occasionally, but we really don't turn many away. You know, it's not like it's ten a day. You know, it, it's just like, you need, and like I said, you have to have some little bit of control, otherwise your nutrition fund is way out of whack and, and it can't be in the, in debt, because then that's gonna come out of the general fund, because we're gonna borrow money from the general fund to cover that, because, so you have to have a little bit of, just come stand in lunch line one day, show you how to do it. You know, it's, it.
I think the problem is kids are getting told that their low bun, lunch account, and it's not being said discreetly out of the point of sale. It's being said when they're picking up their tray or they're not even there yet, then it's being said that they need lunch.
Well, then we're not saying it to them, because the only person that knows it is the point of sale. I mean, when they pick up their trays out in the hallway, that has nothing to do with, nobody's there, nobody knows. And when they put their number in for their first round.
I did see, like, in the announcements, it says, like, so-and-so student come to the office, or we want you to come to the office, for whatever reason, right? Could they, could that be an alternative? Like, the students that are low on their balance come in the morning to the office, so that you didn't have to tell them in lunch line, but I mean, they're still gonna come to the office, so it could still be, I mean.
You know, that's one more thing for the office people to do when they.
Yeah, somebody else to do. Right. Yeah, it's just trying to avoid undue embarrassment for students, but.
There's no, there's no easy solution. I mean, I don't, do you, do you tell grade school kids?
No.
Okay.
This is happening high school.
I thought that would probably, that's why I asked.
No. That's where they'll, we have the secretary call or, well, first we email, then we send a hard copy.
Okay. Okay. Yep, okay.
We do everything that we can before we make a phone call.
Yep.
And there is a bill on a senator's desk, they're trying to pass it, so, I mean, we could be proactive and just get ahead of it anyways. I mean, if it's passed, we're gonna have to figure it out anyways.
It'll never pass, but, but no, never, ever at the elementary level.
Yeah, okay. I didn't think.
Because they're clueless. Them littles are clueless.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't get seconds at that.
They don't have seconds.
Yeah.
But my son has told you, can I get an extra milk? And that's okay.
Yeah. And, 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 you know, typically, nine-tenths of the high school kids will say, I got the chunk in my pocket, can I go put it in? Or it's in my backpack.
But all we have to do is embarrass one, to hurt their feelings and embarrass them in front of their parents.
Well, if we're doing one thing at the elementary and a different thing at the high school, why can't we just do, do the same thing at both schools and try it? And then if it doesn't work, then you, you know, just. Because really, the money most times from high school is gonna come from the parents, maybe not, they might have a job, older ones, I don't, I guess.
Personally?
I guess, as long as we're telling kids, high school age kids or junior high kids discreetly, that their balance is low, um, just so they don't get very killed. I don't, I don't think that's, I think you.
I think it's because it's discreet, and had you, I mean, discreetly is so a kid isn't embarrassed and the person next to him doesn't hear, that that's not being done. But then if I'm getting an email every day that my kid's lunch balance is low, I'm aware of it. Well, it's the parent. Parents obviously didn't take action. Right, but the kid isn't gonna say, oh, well, here, let me whip out my check, like, you know, it's, it's not the kid's responsibility, I think they got enough going on at school.
Are we sending, is that awesome? Like, not just emails, but actual.
What's that, John? Like, the notices got phoned with the kid?
Are you just doing email or are you doing mail to phone calls for high school, high school kids?
They get emails at ten dollars below or whatever they have sent.
No, 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 not email, I'm asking mail. Like, do you actually physically mail something to these parents?
I think you can get a text or email.
So could we mail? No. I'm just, I'm just trying to, like, it's not every parent has an email. Maybe they have no idea, and I don't have, I'm just.
But they get.
Exactly, yeah, so.
But you can get a text, you can send it as a text as well.
But if they're not reaching, if we're not reaching with those parents, maybe we need to, instead of sending a letter, send them a letter. I mean, most parents, if they get something from school, they're gonna open it if they wanna know what it is.
Does telling the student, I think the main question is, does telling the student curb the negative balance? That's really the answer. If telling, well, I guess it could, and it could avoid embarrassment if they don't come back for the seconds too, if they know. But I mean, if it's not really curbing the nega, negative balance for telling them, then it's not worth.
Typically, money shows up the next day because they want seconds.
So action does get taken most of the time. And it should always be discreet. You know, you're saying it wasn't, I understand that, but, you know.
I mean, we just figure out a way for kids, every student to get the same one.
Yeah, just the same.
However, that policy says.
So let's, um, modify the policy for next month to remove all the alternative lunch options, and then we'll move to just leave everything else the way it is for now. Okay, um, vape detectors.
Um, we've been having a lot of issues with vaping at the high school. We've had a rash of good conduct penalties this year. Um, there's several companies out there offering vape detectors, I think Mrs. Holmes has several different ones, and FlySense is the one that she thinks is best. Do you wanna talk about that a little bit, or?
I can, um, and I, I've put most of the information in the board update. They're about a thousand dollars apiece. It would cost five hundred dollars for the setup fee for the first year, and then it's a hundred and fifty dollars each year after that. What it does is it detects the chemicals and sends the administrator, who are, whoever the account is set up for a text message, so that the administrator can go check who's in the restroom and what's going on. I think it would be a huge deterrent in those areas where we can't put video cameras, um, and we don't have supervision like the locker rooms and the bathrooms. Because we have issues on a weekly basis, and it's a health issue, it's a risk to our kids. If this would help, if you think it would help, I think it would be really beneficial.
I had the, the invoice was loaded, projecting cost was nine thousand three hundred and two dollars.
So how do those work out there? If there's, somebody's vaping and it goes off like a fire alarm, or is it just notified you?
No, it just sends a text message to whoever's hooked up to that system.
Okay.
So the kid wouldn't know that somebody had been notified.
And then that person would just go, like.
Well, if it's the male restroom, we're gonna find a male staff member to go there.
My only concern, I watched the videos on it, so my concern was, okay, somebody gets a text, what if they're not there? That, you don't know who did it. There could be multiple people in the bathroom, and what if the person, like, it's gonna take the person to go to the, I think it's a great deterrent, don't get me wrong, I do. But I think there's some other things that, like, you don't know who did it, and what if you don't get, by the time you get to the bathroom, what if they're already gone? You know, I mean, there's some other logistical things.
And I think you could have multiple people hooked up, so, you know, Beth and I are both.
We're fast.
And also, if they don't know, they're still probably gonna have that on them, or in their backpack.
Wait around.
So we would probably find whatever they were vaping with on them.
I just think it's a lot of, it's a lot of money right now, but one thing I was wondering is, I sent Mrs. Holmes there to grant for it. And our, uh, school with our numbers qualifies for it, so maybe we could think about it more, if those people wanna watch the videos and stuff. What Mrs. Holmes posted on there was really great, you could see how it works and everything, and see if we qualify for the grant. Because with the grant, we might be able to get it, reduce costs. I don't think it was free, it didn't look like they went all the way down as free, but that could help with the financial burden, instead of approving it now, just wait and see, and we could.
That would make a difference.
But there is a grant there, and we did qualify, look, there's a.
We could get some sort of grant.
That would be helpful. Right. I was just, and another part I was worried about is, like, it looks good, but then, like, once the students figure out how to trick the system, and we don't actually catch people. But it might be a deterrent.
It might keep them from vaping in the bathroom.
Right, I, I agree, I think there are, any way to minimize that vaping risk is crucial, but, um. Um, so, um, what did we think about the vaping? Is there's any other questions? How would you guys like to proceed?
I see a way you could.
Yeah, if you get that grant, I'd say wait and do that.
Alright, so we'll just table that item for now. Approve the Pepsi contract.
Um, we found out that we've had a contract with Pepsi for the last couple of years. And I met with the representative a couple of weeks ago. Um, currently, we're paying over thirty dollars a case for Gatorade and thirty dollars a case for carbonated soft drinks. And this contract would bring it down to under twenty dollars a case for each of those. And, uh, they also have juices and some other machines and stuff that would work with the kitchen, and, and then we also get rebates off of it, so. Um, I recommend that we go ahead and approve the contract with Pepsi for, I believe it's three years.
Is there any other companies besides Pepsi that offer programs like this?
Coke does, but they'll cut the costs, and just went through all this, Clarksville too.
Sure, that contract, is that for concessions and, and the building machines and stuff?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that contract? Alright, I need a motion to approve the Pepsi contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the Pepsi contract.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the NIAC contracts.
Um, this is just, uh, approving our current enrollment programs and our, uh, dual credit programs. Something we do every year, so we'll go ahead and, inside, we'll get them back to Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the NIAC contracts.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve concussion protocol.
Uh, we're getting an update to the concussion protocol. Ms. Stone, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure. We also have a lot of, of issues with concussions these days, um, and there was just a lot of gray area in, when is it, when can. And there was just a lot of gray area in when is it, when can a student be released to start the return to play protocol? What's the return to learn protocol? What, what exactly does the doctors know what to say in order to release the kids completely? And so we tried to clear that up with this new protocol. It was modeled off what Charles City uses with some input from Taylor Physical Therapy to meet our needs. So this protocol was written with the school nurse and the A.D.s and me and, you know, just trying to work through and make it more clear some of those gray areas than we were having. Did you have any questions on it?
No. The only thing I thought is the wording is a little bit confusing, you know, like on the same day. I know what you're trying to say, but it's hard to get those words all to get what all you're trying to say. But I thought those two paragraphs where it says, or, who says a licensed healthcare professional trained in the evaluation and management of concussions and other brain injuries has provided a statement in writing on the same day of the head injury that the student does not have symptoms of a concussion. And then a form is available at the office, the school website. And then it says, or, and then talks about practitioner has cleared them. And then it says, no, this doesn't mean they can come back. And then it has like four bullet points, which is a little bit confusing.
This is, it, this is really clear to us compared to what we were working.
Yeah.
You were going to go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, no.
So they either have to go to a doctor on the same day and the doctor has to say they don't have symptoms. Then they can just go back to playing. Or if they've waited longer than that or they do have symptoms, then they have to do this protocol.
The second.
And the protocol is they have to have seen a physician who says that they can return.
Right.
The note to return doesn't mean they return immediately. It means they do the return to learn and the return to play protocol. They have to make it through return to learn, which means they make it through a full day of school with zero symptoms. If they do that, then they can do the return to play, which is a, another five days. And you can only move one step per twenty-four hours where it progressively gets more intense exercise. Anytime that they can't do that exercise without symptoms, they go back to a previous step where they do not have symptoms.
And it says in here that the coach will be reporting back to the A.D. basically on these steps every night.
The one in charge of managing their, their progression through those steps.
Because if they wait until the next day to see the doctor, it's automatic. You have to go through your six day protocol. Yes, it's automatic. Yeah, I kind of understood what that meant to say, but it's like the wording is a little bit. Yeah.
If you can figure it out, let us know.
That's what I'm thinking. We should, we should look at those, or that little section there. The, but I think after you read it a few times, it's like, okay. But I guess as long as they enforce it, you know. Yeah, I think it's important to take it seriously if kids get a concussion and make sure that we're being diligent with it.
Because we get all kinds of notes from doctors. They'll say, low probability of a concussion.
Not a concussion, but an injury. Yeah.
If it says low probability, there's still a probability that it is one. So we got to put them through the protocol. So the only thing that that doctor's note can say and they not get the protocol is that they do not have any symptoms of a concussion.
And could you impact, I know it's a software program that we use, but what does it do? It just keeps the documentation?
It measures like their response to things. So it, it would look like they're playing a game when they do it and it's going to measure response time and other things.
Okay.
Memory, things that if they had a concussion, they should score, score lower on. And if generally if they score within ten percent, they're okay to, to return to play. It's just another measure, another, another safety check. Because kids can, you know, they want to run, they want to play. And they'll, they'll tell you they don't have any symptoms so that they can do that.
Any questions, comments?
I think it's just good to have it tied down so that it's easier to.
I feel like this is going to be way easier for us to work with.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the concussion protocol.
I'll make a motion to approve the concussion protocol.
Second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve legislative board?
Just send those to me. I'll just compile them and get them. I'll just get them to I.S.B. too. Give them a note too.
Approve water softener for the Allison Building?
We've been having a lot of issues with the water in this building, buildup in the boilers. The water softener actually is completely working. We got a hope from Wicks Water Works to put a softener on the entire building, which will save us issues in the buildup in the boilers. It's caused a lot of issues. We've spent a lot of money on fixing boilers and doing different things within the last few years because of the sediment buildup. We're having issues in the kitchen right now with buildup of. So I would have to go ahead and approve this, finishing the whole building for eleven thousand one hundred eighty dollars through Wicks.
We're going to try to remove the hold on ourselves or just let them do that?
I would let them do it. I'm not sure Mark's got time to do it right now.
I'll make a motion to approve the water conditioner.
Second? I'll second it. All favors say aye?
Aye.
State tournament link policy. I didn't see that on here.
It's not. Right now, when we approved the handbook, this call, we took out the language that allowed the staff to use professional days to go to state tournament because of some of the issues that we had this last year. Mr. Almeline approached me shortly after the board meeting last month and we had some conversation about it. The coaches had approached him and they would still like to be able to take the teams. So what their request would be that we change the wording on that, that they be granted a, they have professional leave if they take the teams to the tournament. And then they would also like to be granted a, a day of professional leave to go to any, to one clinic and that's fine. That one I'm okay with. And that's already, we'll take care of that. But that one's not in, in the policy written, but the other one is. So after talking to Mr. Almeline and getting the request from the teachers, I guess I would, I would recommend that we change the wording that they're allowed the one professional day if they take the team.
So why did we take it out last year then?
Because we had issues.
But we're not going to have issues this year?
Well, we had, we had a coach that wanted to take the professional day to go on his own.
Not take the team?
Not the team.
So it wasn't worked that way last?
Correct.
When we did have to take the team?
Yes.
I guess I have a little bit of trouble changing the policy mid-year when we had a meeting about the handbook. Or a short, brief one on our changes and we agreed to change these things. And then we agreed we'd have a committee meeting with all union, a group of union and non-union members to comment about the handbook. And then we'd update it with recommendations. So if that's what, I'm okay with what people want to provide as feedback. But I think we should have a collaborative group on the handbook.
And have it part of that discussion.
And have it part of that discussion as we moved items from the certified.
Because you were supposed to have that back in. Last month, weren't we?
We didn't set for it yet, but we need, we were going to do it before contracts went out, but there just wasn't enough time to have a whole committee meeting before we had to get contracts in people's hands. So the goal was to have a meeting with a subset of committee members to look over the handbook and express any modifications that the staff would like to see. I thought we had kind of already talked about this at our handbook meeting as far as what we did talk about. State tournaments and allowing staff to use professional development days even if they took students and it was recommended to us not to do that. And so I, I see benefit in, in it. Because it's, you know, if you want to use students, the students won't know.
Would it be, would it be appropriate to try to make this group together now and have this part of that discussion? Ms. Stone was, could make the recommendation there? I mean, I don't know. So this is.
Only we can try volleyball, football, state tournaments are coming up in a hurry. Our state recording finished. Their software's not working correctly on some things.
So both, both the football coach and the volleyball coach want to take students to the tournaments?
That is my understanding.
I haven't gotten a request from Mr. Vanderloop, but I know that volleyball would like, we've always let them take their team if they want to because it's a great team building opportunity. The kids look forward to it. Some parents would take them, others would not. So it's an opportunity that all kids can get to have to see what it's like at a state tournament.
Well, I was thinking maybe not changing the policy, but maybe making an exception like with a request from a, a teacher that wants to take a group of students to the state tournament. And then we can look at the whole handbook with our committee and then change policy.
So just make an exception for the E.C. sports at this time, this one time?
Well, if we don't get the handbook, if basketball comes and they want to do it the same thing, they can just, you know, they don't necessarily have to come to the board, but they could submit a request to Mr. Mrs. Holmes and Mr. Foster and.
So it sounds like we're okay with the coach taking the team. It's just a matter of since we changed that and then since we made that change, now how do we go back and kind of regroup?
Well, and, and that was, it was my recommendation that we make that change because of the issues we had.
Right.
And the way I kind of looking at it right now is that, okay, they've, they've came to me and they've asked and they've, they've given me valid arguments as why we should change that. And because that was my feelings on it, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be the district's feelings on it. So I'm okay with, with changing that at this point because they've convinced me that we should change that.
So how, we, we all like to proceed. Do you want to do it on an individual basis in a way to actually change the policy or do you want to just change the policy?
I would say wait. Change the policy when we have a group to look at the handbook and go through the handbook. But I'm okay with them submitting something.
I'm about to just, you know, on an individual basis at this point and then when we can change the handbook at the end of the year or whenever. You know, in that way we're not changing policy, you know, in the middle of the year, which we've done, which I don't necessarily think is the right thing to do. So on some other things that.
Alright. They were not.
Okay.
So next.
So what I, what I'm hearing is just we need to make the decision based on, on the.
On the request.
With the last coach.
Right. Okay, so next will be closed session. Okay, personnel resignations.
None.
Um, contracts.
Colin Friesman, high school girls track, and Nicole here in the high school assistant softball. Depending on her occupation, yes.
I need a motion to approve the contracts. Second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
I need a motion to extend the contract for Joel Foster.
Make a motion.
Second? Uh, subs.
Jill Still for substitute teacher, Lori Smith for substitute teacher, Emily Dietz for associate, any paperwork and background check, and Mary Hanson for a sub in the Allison team.
Need a motion to approve the subs?
I'll approve the subs.
Second?
I'll second it.
All favors say ayes?
Aye.
Admin report?
We got volunteers.
Oh, sorry, volunteers.
Andy Olson for volleyball and Renee Zallie is any testing.
I need a motion for volunteers.
I'll make a motion to approve the volunteers.
Second? All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Admin reports.
I was appro, approached by Pheasants Forever, North Butler Pheasants Forever about their interest in helping to fund a shooting club. They're doing some, they're doing some background work on that to see what it would take. And we're going to work on getting our ducks in a row before it comes to the board. They want, they don't want it to just be North Butler. They want it to be more of a regional team. And on the national playing field already, Charles City, so it would probably be a little faster as well. I think A.B. has a team. Waverly has a team. So it'll probably just be North Butler and Clarksville. We had some tile issues at the softball field that we talked about in the past and we were exploring them. They did dig up just a little bit and the tile line was hooked into the wrong line. And so it's a lot smaller fixing what we thought it was. They moved the tile line two feet and hooked it to another one and now it's running good. The last time it rained really heavy, I went out there and the only place we even had a wet spot was the left field corner. So it would have plowed off better. And speaking with some of our A.E.A. people, I went to our superintendent's meeting first Wednesday of the month. And was approached by the regional administrator from the A.E.A. And she was raving about our new teachers in our elementary and the things that their, the A.E.A. reps are seeing when they go in their classrooms. The, the participation of all our teachers in this building, professional development has, has improved quite a bit since last year. Lots of good things, a lot of good comments about the high school, our new teachers up there. Social media response has been really good, especially when this gap is supposed to be our fourth class. There's a lot of really nice things going on up there. Certified enrollment is an issue right now. The state's having some software issues that they haven't got all worked out. One email I got said that we're not supposed to share the numbers. I will tell you right now that if it stays where it's at, we're down fifty. We're down thirty-nine butts in seats, but because of the formulas that they use, our certified enrollment will be down about fifty. We're actually, Clarksville's actually up butts in seats, but they're going to be down certified enrollment, at least the way it looks right now. And that's if they get all the bugs fixed in their software between now and the end of the month. And then we have, we have special let count on November first. So then we'll have a last meeting on Tuesday. Lots of good, lots of good comments about what's going on with lunch at the high school. The kids are getting three options a day. I've been trying to eat up there most of the time when I can because of the salad bar and the options. But that, I mean, we got a lot of, a lot of good things going on up there. So. And then like I said earlier, you know, I sent out the financial health report a couple of weeks ago. And everything in that looks good. It's right where we projected that we would be after we hired the first grade teacher and the pairs in the classrooms. Last year we're down about a quarter million dollars. And right now it's looking like with our projections and the initial line item budget, like we even or maybe up just a little bit at the end of this year. So. That's all we got.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
So maybe the next meeting.
We'll set, we'll send out some information on that. Plus we got the other meeting coming up.
So October twenty-third, five thirty here. Will that, will, will you pass?
We're not going to have it all done because.
But enough to work with and discuss like kind of direction we need to make.
Depends on what state gives us. Depends on where they're at with their software.
I'm sorry.
But we still, still have the budget guaranteed too.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, right now my recommendations wouldn't be to change anything that we're doing. Except look at, looking maybe numbers of kids enrolling programs and change things up if we need to because of that.
Each year you see the numbers come in, our income is going down and our expenses are going like this, which we've had enough to cover it. That's what I, that's what I feel. If you like.
We'll need, we'll need more time to look at like enrollments and classes and stuff.
I agree. But at least we can get a baseline.
And if we had anything change, you know, that's unexpected, what we would do in that situation.
But those, those types of cuts, we'll talk about probably in January, February.
Yeah.
Usually February.
So, we're still on September twenty?
Yeah, five thirty here, at the time.
Five thirty. And then, we've probably moved to November.
We can still have it, but we'll have another one.
To see.
You said October twenty-ninth, right?
Yep, seven, seven o'clock for the other one.
Yeah.
October twenty-ninth, that's seven o'clock here in Clarksville. And in actuality, in actuality, maybe we can have, start a little bit earlier than what Clarksville does, and we can do the reorganization draft real quick. You know what I'm saying, because, because we have to have.
Yeah, that won't be till, that won't be till November.
We can't have a reorganization meeting until November, after the auction and after the campus is back.
Right.
So, we have to have two meetings, I'm sure, in November, our regular board meeting, and then our reorganization board meeting after the campus is back. I was talking about the one that we're doing in us. Oh. That's what. That's what.
That's the joint one.
Oh, shoot. That's why I was like, no, I'm not, because that's actually before the.
I have a conflict on the eleventh, we'll try to get out of it.
Well, if we know this far, or at our twenty-third meeting, we can readjust the schedule, because it's fine, in advance, we can let everybody in the public.
I'm supposed to give a class, so it's one of those that it's gonna be hard to get out of, but I also don't wanna miss this meeting, so.
Yeah, that sounds, that's fine, we can.
Can we talk about it on the twenty-third?
Yeah. One of the, we can change November one.
Massage and bars.